And Mayor, this is in the, I believe it's in the common drive or the
Yes, it is.
Google Drive and it's, I never, I call it fill outable, so you can actually just fill out one word there, so you don't have to handwrite it.
But some of us don't have.
Fill outable?
Fill outable. That's an official word.
You can fill it out online.
Or you can handwrite it in, that's right. As long as we can read it.
Okay, now that we've got that debacle figured out, welcome to the work session. Item number one, Monument Lake 2023 season recap and 2024 season preview. And I see Mr. McGraw in the audience. Come on down.
Do I get him?
Come on down. Come on down. You're the next contestant.
I'm ready, I think. But I just wanted to come by and say hi and go over a little bit of 2023. I sent you guys, you know, the, the, I don't know, rundown of what it looked like from, from our perspective. Feel like it was another amazing, amazing year at Monument. So we're, we're certainly grateful for that. I did want to give you guys a check for the, for the, our assets sold, which is, it was a third percent agreement
Right.
that I give you guys. That's separate from whether we made or lost money. So let's check for $10,260.
Thank you.
Maybe it was something.
They won't give it to us.
Beyond that, financially, you know, from an operator's standpoint, I just got my financial year in finance, which is the funnest finalized then. I'm extremely confident we're gonna lose money this year, but we're, we're better prepared for that.
Money well spent.
It wasn't money well spent and, and we're on the, we're on the uptick, I think. I think we're, we're on the right track to, you know, we spent a lot of money on marketing. And we, we could continue to, through last year and we'll continue to this year as well. But we're, we're seeing some incredible numbers from that too. I mean, just, if you just, on the email analytics, to, to send out 188,000 emails and have over 38% of those opened is pretty impressive. So people are learning about, and I think that's probably around 70, 80,000 people that are wanting to learn more about Monument. So we're very, very pleased with those numbers. Our social numbers are, you know, we, we started with nothing really. So, you know, on the social side of things, so they're, they're growing and they're good. But, but it's, it's really good to, to see that when people see Monument Lake come across their email that they're opening it up and they will know what's going on. Last year, we saw a lot of new faces at Monument from a lot, from, you know, Kansas, Nebraska, Texas, Oklahoma, surrounding states. And that was a big plus for us. I think a lot of that came from the, the music festival and the advertising went along with that. But they really, they, they, you know, when you're advertising for Monument, you know, it's, it's got a music festival attached to it. And if you're advertising for, for the music festival, it's got, it's certainly got Monument attached to it. Another thing that I thought I'd put in that report that, that is not in there, I noticed, was we, we use 39 radio stations between Colorado, Kansas, Oklahoma, Nebraska and Texas and that we partner with, and they run ads for us all season long. So that's another, you know, avenue where we're, you know, we're just pumping information out about Monument. But all in all, very happy with it. Continue to make small improvements every day and, you know, they're, they're growing into, to big results, I believe. We're, we're not doing a whole lot of, you know, program wise from last year to this year. We're just gonna run it, we're just gonna level out. And last year, we, we spent a lot of money on, on help because I felt like in the first two years, we were lacking in service, you know, in, in some areas. And so, so last year, we really beefed up our employees to, to try to make sure that there was never anyone that didn't have a question answered or who wasn't being served properly. And I think we went a little too heavy last year, so we're gonna back that off just a little bit. I think we found our happy medium and, and so we'll, we'll save a little bit of money there. But again, that was year three, you know, I've built a business or two and I know that it takes, it takes a few years to get these things on the, on wheels. So I really, we have a very positive outlook for 2024 financially. And see how it goes. Same thing with the music festival. Last year, from year one to year two, we doubled. We had just over 1,000 occupants of year one. Last year, we had 2,017 people showed up for three day, for each day. So that was a, to double. Anything, you know, is pretty exciting stuff for us. Of course, it, it still lost money at 2,000 occupants, but we knew we were in danger. So we're, we're, we do believe that year three will be a, a better year and hopefully we see that in finance. We're, we're on the right track. We're, I've got management wise, we're gonna, we've made a few changes. There's a fellow named Nathan Lagway who has worked for me in Kansas, in the scrap industry. When I sold that business, he moved to Colorado to work for, for me and helped me manage another business that I was building. I sold it in 2022 and so he's helped me build these businesses. He works, you know, he's, he's managed hundreds of employees. He's one of the best human beings I've ever met in my entire life. And his contract just came up, basically expired with the company that I'd sold to. He had to stay on with them for a year. And so he came to me a few months ago and said, well, I'm ready to put back in. So where do you want me? And I, you know, I wasn't here. And he's, he is, if, if, if you met him, you would see that he is somebody, he is one of the best leaders I've ever met in my life. So he's gonna be a part of Monument this year. And I'm extremely excited to have him there because he is a, he is a service, he's a server. That's what he is. And as long as you got the, you know, a good guy helping you run it, you know, he's a, he's an excellent leader and people do like to follow him. So we're, we're very excited about that. Other than that, right now at the resort, we're getting ready to start putting roofs on cabins and, and we are renovating the old, the old shower house that has been used in I don't know how many years. We've got it in, we're gonna turn that into employee housing.
Where is that, Brett? I thought on the property.
You know where the new shower house is? Okay, it's kind of central property from, from the restaurant. You can see it from the restaurant, from the field. Yeah, it's half of it right now is our laundry facility. But then the backside of it was the old shower facility and bathrooms that hadn't been used in years. We, we went in, didn't, didn't do anything with the exterior structures. Obviously, we would never do that. But inside, we went ahead and we're renovating that for employee housing. We've, that's been my, my biggest, biggest, I'm not sure how to put it, eight
Yeah.
last several years because we had housing, enough housing for, you know, six people. And you need to run a, a resort that takes 25 people. And so it's been, it's been kind of a, trying to figure out how to create that. But we, we did find it and we're gonna have very nice housing where our employees can have separation this summer and not, not so much, but dorm style co-ed type living situation. They'll have their own rooms and have separation.
Nice.
We are continuing to build what I call them West Mountains. So it's the whole, upper west side of the lake. There was an old road in there, we went in, developed it and, and we're continuing to develop that into some more primitive campsites. Other than that, it's just another day. Is there any questions I can answer for you guys?
Another day in paradise.
It is, another day.
Thank you, first of all. Every time you come in, I'm just so happy and excited that you're there. I was gonna ask our city manager, what's our, the term on the agreement? I don't remember when we started this whole thing, how long this was for or whatever.
How did you remember the term?
If he's correct, it was a five-year initial term. Okay, all right, great, all right.
I actually, I, I was, I, I looked at it this morning.
Did you?
I thought it was, so it was four years, which we're going into our fourth. And then it'd be two consecutive five-year terms and then year to year beyond that.
Okay.
So the reason I thought it was a three-year and so I thought this was gonna be kind of that discussion. Because of course, I don't ever want to leave, right? But anyways, yeah, that's, that's where it is. So it's first four years and I think that was kind of, what do you call it, maybe a probationary period? Like just to make sure that no shenanigans were going on out there. And then, but yeah, so at the end of this season, I think that's been the two consecutive five years we'll start.
I, I know, it's a relief to me and to all of us that you're there and that it is something that we can brag about as a city and some people out there. So we're very glad to hear how well it's going and that you're, you're, our understanding that it's a building process and it seems like every year it's just exponentially. Kind of great, the type question for you just goes out, what are these, on the social media stuff? What is that? I don't know what that little thing looks like, a table just that's around it.
So anyway, so on the, oh, that's a total reach. So that's how many people that particular platform, so that's Facebook for Monument Lake Resort. We reached 539,000 people last year in our, you know, in our ads that we run. You know, we do paid ads and our posts. So we reached 539,000 people. Out of that 539,000, we had 36,000 of those people visit our profile. So kind of drew them in to come and see what, what really is going on, which is a fantastic number. It really is. So, and there again, on the email analytics, which is the center one, we sent out 189,000, 188,000 of those were delivered. The rest of them would have went to maybe some of spam or something. But of that 188,000, 38% of those were open. And that is a massive number. I mean, it's like some of the best numbers I've ever seen. So it's, it's really neat. And so, yeah, that's where it is.
Thank you, and make sure that I'm signed up for all that as well, because I'm the chairman and stuff.
Yeah, well, I've got our marketing guy, he, he worked for us, had a, and just one of the best guys in the world for the first couple of years. And then last winter, he was still working, you know, as we were building the campground. He was like, you know, he said, my, my fiancee, she wants to move to some, like the city. And I, and I hated to hear it, but I said, well, you know, I don't want to lose you. What, what do you, I mean, what do you do? And he's like, well, I got a degree in marketing. I was like, what? Working for $60 bucks an hour, you know, picking up trash, you know? I'm like, what, what are you doing? And so he, he came on and took over that piece of it and he's just gone on.
Oh, thank you, Brett, for the continued improvements. And that's where I was gonna ask you, how the second cave manifest fared as opposed to the first one?
Well, we, we didn't lose near as much money. That was good. But it was, operationally, it was perfect. It was, it was amazing, lineup was great. But just the, the, the people that have, that believe in this thing more than anything, you know, production people and volunteers and things like that, everybody did a phenomenal job. The, the event was, went off about an inch, it was absolutely perfect. Now we're just gonna figure out how to make money out of it.
So like you said, the third year could be a charm.
I think, I think it will be. And that's kind of the unwritten, you know, rule of music festivals I, I've learned is just give it three years, you know? And really, we only, you know, to, our break even is only 3,200 people. So we're, you know, we're, we're, well, simply if we double again, we've, we nailed it, you know? So I believe it'll happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I don't have any. Thank you. Good to see you again, Brett.
Good to see you. I'll come see you anytime, just to let you know, I mean, I'm.
What are you doing up there when it's not a festival? What's going on?
At Monument?
Yeah. Are you coming up with any, any other ideas besides caveman?
No, I mean, what have, we, this, this past year, we, we implemented a spa service. A gal that actually just had a, played a big role in my wife's healing. My wife broke her neck the right, our first year of this. I got signed a contract and she broke her neck. Yeah, I signed it like March 21st, she broke her neck April 15th. And so it's, of course, that's a long process. But the gal that, that, that works on her up in northern Colorado, wonderful young lady, she came down to the resort, fell in love with it and said, you know, I'd like to extend my services down there. So we did that last year, so we're, and it was a great success in our opinion. We are gonna have some healing retreats out there, holistic type, same thing she was doing. She's gonna, she's gonna operate them. Those are a bit geared more towards locals, our local people out there, they just lined up for her. So we're, we are doing that and, you know, we're, our weddings and live events every weekend.
That's, that's some good action.
We did, we have great action coming down.
People still get married?
People still get married, yeah. So we, we carve out, we carve out about, you know, six or seven weekends for, for weddings and then the rest of them, we, we do live entertainment. So it's gonna be every weekend, there's, there's some action. But other than that, we're just, we're just trying to, trying to serve people.
Brett, thank you sincerely for what you, what you're doing. You know, when you think back on everything that's happened in city council, or at least for me, I think that I find myself agreeing with council on Oak Hill Street pretty often. Monument Lake is one of the things I think I'm really just proud of, my involvement in that. You, you do all the work and I'm proud of it. But I, I very often hear from a lot of people that are super, super happy with what's going on there. So thank you for, I enjoyed, I enjoyed going up there myself. I had a question, this is probably leading into something, but it's none of my business at all. But it hasn't stopped me before though. But I was wondering if, if it's possible in any way to like help cross pollination between Monument Lake business and Trinidad business? And like an idea that came to mind, and it may not be a good idea, but it's an idea. If, if people say arriving on the day of arrival had like a restaurant receipt from Trinidad, maybe they could skip the park fee or something like that, I don't know. And obviously that takes them more in between. And then you could do something that's, that's mutual as well if, you know, trying to help people from local come up to there. Like if you, you know, you could have some sort of cross pollination. It'd just be really nice if Trinidad and Monument could strengthen that relationship in some way. And it's, it's just an idea I had, but wanted to at least throw it out there, do you?
Nice. It's, I don't disagree with the idea. I think we just need to, to sit down and, and develop it to where it's, you know, it's beneficial. Obviously, our goal really, I mean, is, is to benefit Monument Lake Resort and Trinidad. About everything we do is, is centered around, you know, this area. As far as people coming out to go to the restaurant, things like that, they don't have, they don't bypass us anyways. You know, if they're just coming to visit enough, if they're, if they're coming to visit the park, they do, they do bypass. I don't know how we track that. You know, if they're coming from Trinidad or somebody sent them from Trinidad, how do we track that with, with? I guess we just have to.
We, we have that company that does the phone metrics, right? And if you look at that, I, I don't know that they extend out that way, but in town for sure. So let's, yeah. I just, I just think if we, anything that we can do to help Trinidad's economy is bring more people to Trinidad. If you bring more people to Trinidad, that potentially gives you an extended outreach too. Thanks for hearing.
Yeah, no, if, anytime, we could just, let's develop some ideas and, and try to tie them together. Always.
All right, well, thank you.
Always open to that.
Did you just see him give a check to the city manager for the gate fees?
I did.
So you're trying to cut that.
If, if it can help small business in Trinidad, I think that that's worth it.
No, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
You could gavel me.
And two, if, if, you know, if we can get the literature, right? You know, out there, you know, about the things to see and do in Trinidad, by all means, we'll, we'll put that out there, we'll put it in with every guest that, every guest that checks into the, the registration office. We can put, you know, any type of Trinidad flyers or anything in their hands, we'd be happy to.
Does the lodging tax board give, do you do any advertising through them? Is that, is there a connection there?
Yeah, Mayor Council, I'm actually glad you asked that. So with our new contract with Vista Works out of Denver, I believe we've already identified Monument Lake as something we want them to highlight in their general tourism campaign, but I will make sure that.
Do you know that, Mr. McGraw?
No.
We just hired a marketing firm.
Yeah.
So do you, have you ever met or talked with Marty Hackett?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, she would give you that information and maybe you, the information, how to get to Vista Works.
Okay.
Because it's supposed to, it is a uniform method to advertise Trinidad. So you definitely need to be in there.
That would be great, yeah. And, and I would like to do the same. Anything that you guys could do for us, especially along the, you know, the, the front of Monument Lake Resort or the, or the music festival.
That's what I was thinking about. I mean, if, if like the local restaurants especially, because this, this weekend was, I mean, amazing.
It's, it's gonna be, yeah.
And like, I went into, I'm sorry, the, the food court.
Yeah, Marketplace.
Yeah, Marketplace, thank you. Two times this weekend for various things, but just jam packed. And I think primarily, I, I really feel that it was out of town traffic. But if we had a presence that highlighted Monument Lake there in some, you know, tangible way, it would help drive business, maybe not on this trip, but the next trip. And that's what I was thinking, like some sort of reciprocity. Because people are heading from Texas and all over to various locations. And if they say, wow, we could drive 180 less miles and do that here, well, they're very likely to.
Yeah, we could set up some type of, you know, code program or something like that and, and do some discounts.
Yeah, I think it'd be great.
You know, Monument Lake, we always knew that it was a gem. It just took the right person to pull up there to polish it. And you have definitely done that, you know? When I first got onto council, we spent a lot of time trying to figure out how we were gonna turn that facility around and you have done it. It's almost like a no brainer for us now because you're in charge of your, your gross receipts from one year to the other, prove it up.
Yeah, well, we, the, the improvement, the true capital improvements have come from you guys. You guys have, you guys have been, I mean, I never in a million years dreamed that with municipality that we would have a relationship where you guys are so willing to jump in and, and if we want to improve something, you know, major improvement, you know, you all men just, I mean, it's truly baffling and, and we're, we're extremely grateful, obviously.
As we are.
It wouldn't have happened without.
As we are for you, sir. Thank you, Mr. McGraw.
Thank you very much. And Mayor Council, just real quick, around the side, I did want to mention a couple of projects the city is discussing in the Monument Lake area as well. So last year, and I think starting the year before that in 2022, we cleared out the road that goes around Monument Lake and widened that, bladed it down. This year, we're looking into opening up the campground that's kind of been not used for several years on the west side of the lake, so that'll be expanded camping opportunities. And then Gil is working with Jared Chatterley, they're looking at doing a pedestrian trail that would go around the lake as well. So that way people could get out of the road traffic and actually be able to hike around the lake and go explore a little bit. So really excited to see those improvements happen as well.
How long till GoCo is zipped on the park?
Great, I know. Seriously, you can be the first.
I'll do it.
The beta test.
I'm a lot of weight to suspend it.
Yeah, a lot of good things.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you so much. Item number two, 2023 Police Department Year-In Report Interview and the 2024 To-Date Recap. Acting Chief Tavonovich.
Mayor Council, did you guys get a copy of the end of year report? Okay, so this is my first time talking on the end of the year report and stuff. So I'd like to know what you guys want to know about it. Give me your questions. I mean, there's a lot of information here to go over, stats and.
I think I'd like to hear from your perspective, what you thought was significant about it. I mean, there are things that I saw just based on numbers, but I don't know if that's significant from your point of view.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
How things are changing in, in any way from year to year in Trinidad.
So if you go into the graphs tab from 2013 to 23, starting off, you know, the calls for service in Trinidad have gone down. I don't know if that's just from the population loss that we've endured from the.
Can you tell us what we're looking at?
Oh, I'm sorry, it doesn't have a page number, it's under the graphs tab? Does it, is it showing the tabs?
What's the name of the report that you're looking at?
Calls for Service Index, and then from there on out, I'll be going forward. I'm sorry, the pages aren't numbered, I guess we need to fix that. I apologize.
Where is it?
It's probably like middle of the book. That's gonna be kind of tough without page numbers. I'll let him, she's the one.
It's gonna be about page 33.
Okay. I'll first serve this. I got it, all right, it's this word.
Got it.
Looks like that.
No, it's more of a graph. So what I'm looking at here is some graphs. It's very nice to look at graphs instead of a bunch of numbers on a piece of paper because they're trying to give you a better idea of things.
Mayor Council, we'll go ahead and share Kim's screen and we can put the report up here.
I'll be sure.
Awesome. Oh, here we can all see it together.
That's just X.
Yep, there you go.
Yeah, I didn't realize there wasn't numbers on the pages until I just looked down, so I apologize.
No worries. You got you. Give me one second, I'll just download it. And we will make a video. No, you're good, Mike, you got you. You gotcha. Page four. There it is. All right, so it starts here.
Go to, go further and, uh, see into the question graphs.
Okay.
Cause this one just says.
Yep, I know, it's comprehensive.
Whenever.
Oh, here we go. Here's the graphs. Here, give it to Mike or.
Call for service.
Call for service, yeah.
You might have went just.
Call for service doesn't have a graph on my.
Yeah.
Yeah. Accidents, though.
And maybe it's further down.
It was right after the D Y portion of it.
Okay.
And it's right before. Oh, it's not in there. Oh, there we go, graphs. That's what I wanted to do. Oh.
Yeah, I kinda skipped the graphs.
Okay, I don't know what she did.
Okay.
Stop reading. Oh.
Awesome. All right, keep going. Well. Keep talking, I'll start.
Fine. Yeah. So our calls for service, um, if, if you have the graph in front of you based, that, so that's twenty twenty-three. So from what I'm looking at would be the fact that they are going kind of down, um, in Trinidad. And I don't know if that's a, uh, due to the fact that we've, we've lost some residents over the years due to oil and gas and stuff like that, not being here. We're just trying to regain some traction on that. Um, and these ones are actually, I just think give a better representation of stuff. Graphs like just show a timeline of things. Um, homicides, we don't get a lot of homicides. We've had one and, uh, there was the officer involved shooting also, which was classified as that as well last year. Um, burglaries are, are going down, which is a good sign, right?
So is all the crime going down due to people leaving? Are you correlating what the, the decrease in crime and the decrease of homicides?
That's a good question, you know? I mean, we're, we're not typically a very violent community. Um, I, I, what I see, which, which people think that there's a lot of crime in Trinidad is because the retail thefts and the car break-in thefts, um, the petty thefts, uh, things of that sort. Uh, and the way that the, uh, stats are compiled in one of these through the FBI and NIBR's is, um, some of this stuff all gets thrown under an assault. So just because, um, I harassed somebody doesn't mean that we have a separate section for harassment. So assault is, uh, pile, uh, compiled under assault and intimidation, and that all gets compiled under assault. So those, what, those numbers seem a little bit higher and skewed as well. Uh, the, the, the biggest factor on, on all these stats, stats and data is, is that our violence, we, we don't, we don't have a lot of violent crime in Trinidad. It may seem that we have a lot of crime for the size of our community, but it's more, when you look into the stats and stuff, and I really wish that, that those graphs would have been in there because it would have been very telling to show that those are, those numbers are down. Assaults, uh, sexual assaults, things like that. Um, but one of the biggest things that I'm proud of is if we can go to the K nine stuff.
Yeah.
And I think this is making a huge impact in our community. There we go. So if you see there, from twenty twenty-one, we've kind of reinvented our canine program and got back on track after some missteps. We started off with some, with twenty-six calls and twenty-nine arrests. A total of, uh, a hundred and twenty-nine grams of drug seized. From there on up, it has progressed. I will tell you to date, I don't have a direct number right now, so six pounds were seized last year. We're way past that. We're closer to twenty pounds this year.
Yeah.
Some of the, um, information's not out because we're working in conjunction with CBI on some of these cases and the DEA. So they're not prepared to release anything to us yet on that. But these guys are going out and doing really good work in the community. The question's gonna be raised then is if we're taking all the drugs and the drug dealers off the streets, how come there's still drugs here? Supply and demand, folks. We need to help our people in the town who are struggling with the addiction problems and stuff, you know? And where do we start with that? I don't think there's enough buy-in from, um, the people who have funded. Um, we can cry and cry and cry, but it's, it's, it's a notion like the, we're, we're not the only community separated from this. So what I say is that if there's supply or if there's demand, someone's gonna supply it. All we can do is keep chopping it off and keep moving forward and trying to do better. We're, we're, we're making strides, but, but then we're trying to wrap my brain around, what, what are we gonna do to help people get off the drugs and get back on track and get a job and, um, be successful to the community? So I'm proud of my men and women for, for getting these things off the streets. I just wish there was somebody else that would come help us with addiction and the problems we're having with, with that, with that area, so.
As I understand, you got a grant for a mental health person to come along?
We, we did. Uh, we're, we're working to get a co-responder program, um, off the ground here. We got the grant.
Yep.
We're approved for everything. It's just putting all the pieces into place and figuring out how we're gonna do it. And the way that that's gonna go, and that's gonna help us with our, our folks that aren't really breaking the law, that somebody called the police and said, hey, there's somebody acting crazy over here. What do we do? That's been getting us into trouble in the news, if you guys haven't seen, with unneeded uses of force and, and, and such, where officers have gotten themselves into a situation where they, they kind of cornered somebody that felt threatened by the police now, and they decided to protect themselves, and it just didn't go right. We're, we're training good on this, uh, a lot of de-escalation tactics and techniques. So my team really does a good job with that. But this program, I think, is gonna be very beneficial to our community. Whether it's one person, two people, we'll see where it goes to get these people the help they deserve. It's not the police, right? We're, we're, we're here to fight crime, not, not bother you because you're having a bad mental health day. We wanna help you, but we don't wanna be involved in your life to the point where it's legal.
And it might help with diversion ish.
Yes.
Issues if the mental health person says this is someone who's, it would be best if we just.
Yeah. And, and that's what we're hoping, hoping from. So, I mean, we, I have two-fold things that really, addiction help and mental health services, those are two things that need to kind of be removed from the law enforcement realm. We wanna help, don't, don't get me wrong, but it's not, we're here to fight criminal justice, you know, bring criminal justice to the, to the community. It's unfortunate that some people are hooked on drugs or have mental health issues, but we wanna help in a different aspect. So hopefully this co-responder program helps and will get us going.
And Mayor Council, um, interim chief is right. We are working on the grant agreement as we speak. We're contemplating a July first start date for that. And then we're funded for, I think, a year, um, for the initial round. So hopefully it'll be super successful and we can keep getting funding for that program. Right?
Only other thing that I wanted to talk to you about was that it was, I don't know if I wrote it down in here, but I thought it was remarkable how much code enforcement y'all were doing.
Right, so.
Huge numbers.
That gets brought up a lot, code enforcement. What do they do? I still see problems all over town, you know? Me and Steve have this conversation every time we meet. What's going on with code enforcement? You know, I'm getting a lot of complaints. Well, as you can see, there's what, three hundred and some calls, uh, 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 for service in there under the code enforcement stuff, where they have been taking care of a lot of code vehicles, uh, animal calls obviously take up a lot of our time. Um, the hazardous, hazardous growth accumulations, that's your, your people that have let their locks in their yards get overgrown, that he's, uh, been taking care of. Chris has been taking care of. Uh, so Leandra, it all gets bundled back under Leandra's on her stats on the code enforcement, our community service officer pages. So I think there was three hundred and six of those code enforcement classifications that we cleared out last year. And that's not even probably the tip of the iceberg for the code enforcement problems we have in our community because, uh, the people let it, you clean up one and another one overgrows or somebody's, uh, junk vehicle gets towed off the streets and somebody else down the street does the same thing. So it's kind of a revolving door on the code enforcement stuff, but they are doing things. They are making, um, some strides on getting things cleaned up in town. And, uh, we are starting to hope some people are accountable in this report, uh, you know, with our findings and our violations. And we've had a rebound for what we're doing on, um, defining people and being able to go after them legally if they don't hold up their obligations.
So do these numbers represent, um, when we issue a notice of violation? Or is this when we've issued the actual citation?
So I believe it's the start of the events and classification. She doesn't have in here, which I didn't notice until now, how many were, I guess you call them abated on the code enforcement side of things for like the junk vehicles and the hazardous growth. Um, that's, that's on just her page, which I don't believe it is.
I've got it up on the screen here.
Okay. So it kind of just gives you, and actually there's there's a lot of other calls on here that they do handle, that they do deal with. Um, some of the liquor postings, parking complaints, parking citations, uh, relaying of paperwork for us. They help us put up our speed signs out in the community of tow vehicles. So, I mean, if you go all the way over in the total on that bottom side, it's two thousand six hundred and thirty-two calls for service that, that they've actually dealt with this year and handled. I don't know on the final number of abatements, but that's for two guys. Two guys dealing with that at one time. Um, but like I said, back on, on Leandra's page, on her stats, I don't know if it got sent over or not. It says three hundred and six, but that's hazardous growth conditions, hazardous, hazardous conditions, junk accumulations and public nuisance is the ones that we see, right? So, I mean, the other stuff that we, you know, animal calls, but the other stuff that we see that they do, the extra duty work and stuff, it all totals up to two, two thousand six hundred and thirty-two, um, calls for service and that we, our two code enforcement guys are dealing with.
What about, I don't mean to interrupt you, if I could please, Madam Mayor, what about domestic violence calls? You know, these break, go ahead.
So NIBR's doesn't track it as domestic violence. It's gonna be under your assaults and stuff like that. So there, there's no, there's nothing in NIBR's that will show how many domestic violence calls we have.
Okay. But it doesn't break that down as a category. So can you say, if you know off, offhand, like if those calls went up or down from year over year twenty-three to twenty-two?
Based on my stats, what I would have to do is go through and look at anything that would deal with domestic violence calls, your crimes against person, right? That we would tap the sentence of answer of domestic violence call on there, and that basically means that you're involved in an intimate relationship with another person and you committed a crime against each other or one another. That's how we, we tackle the domestic violence. FBI doesn't care if it's domestic violence related or not. They just wanna know how, who was assaulted, who, you know, in, in that, in, in that respect. So in some of these stats, you'll see there's a domestic problem, but that doesn't mean what domestic violence is. So to answer your question, Mr. Downs, I'd have to go back through and see what the subclassification for a lot of those calls were, because you can also put a subclass that they don't care about in there just for our own tracking records that say domestic violence is following a trend, up or down, or staying flat.
It seems like that would be a good thing to do. I mean, it's a huge, you know, huge issue, right?
Yeah.
But I mean, it just seems like food for thought. I was looking for that in here and I, I didn't find.
That's why you don't see it. So, I mean, if you go, I mean, if you go to that assaults tab, and this is way at the front, Department Incident Activity Reports.
Yeah. And that's how it all, it appears to be throughout, right?
Yeah.
Weapons.
Yeah, it breaks it down assault with a weapon, uh, family knife cutting instrument, family other weapons, family strong arm with a gun, non-family firearm. It breaks it down to about, what, ten, fifteen of those on there. Assault on a peace officer. So, I mean, assaults were at a hundred and fifty-one for twenty-three.
Yeah.
Pretty high.
Hey, Mike, I was gonna ask you, is there more domestic violence when the economy is worse? Do you find that trend?
Uh, I, I would say, yeah, when you're having a poor economy, things are tough and.
Happy Christmas.
Well, there was the old adage, you know, when we're back, you know, when you're on patrol, the sergeants would always say, hey, Christmas is coming, be prepared that you're gonna have some domestic violence. Or, hey, uh, uh, they just laid everybody off at the gas field, you know, be prepared for that stuff. And it wasn't not being, uh, trying to say that, you know, the people at the minor start beating on each other or anything, it's just like, hey, be prepared because, you know, we don't, we wanna make sure that we're keeping everybody safe. So if you're not be walking into a situation prepared and saying, hey, this could potentially be pretty volatile due to domestic violence, you know? So I do see that. I do see that. Is it tracked by stats?
Yeah.
I don't know, we'd have to dig deeper into it and find out what's domestic violence related pertaining to what the FBI wants. You know what I mean? That's kind of what this report goes to, getting our stats to the FBI to stay in compliance with NIBR's, so.
Would you also please explain to council the new policy on shoplifting at Walmart?
So.
They used, they used to not call police, you know, I'm sorry.
No, it's, uh, so we all know that our state legislatures be, sometimes legislators do some things that make people, like, oh, we do. Um, crime is crime, and when you start telling people a crime is not a crime anymore, what do they do? They do it more. And I think they can get away with it, right? So they changed a lot of the statutes over the past couple of years to lessening, um, uh, like a misdemeanor or felony, they, they bumped all that back down to where we're just writing people tickets for a lot of stuff. Um, Walmart used to not, Walmart Safeway, these stores, they used to not wanna prosecute these cases because it wasn't worth their while. Well, now we're, we're getting called there two, three, four, five times a day, and that's literally how many, that's probably just the ones they're catching. Um, there's probably more. So we're sending more citations in and making more arrests off of retail theft, you know? They haven't taken it away from us completely yet. We're not in a state that does that, but it's, could come. I hope it doesn't. They're starting to reverse a lot of the laws back with the drug stuff to making it, you know, you're gonna go to jail again for at least fentanyl. But thefts, yeah, I.
And could I ask you too, please? I mean, we're noticing, of course, a huge upsurge in, you know, shoplifting citations in municipal for Walmart.
Yeah.
Are some of those cases also going to county court? And if so, what's the line of demarcation for what goes to county, what goes to the union?
Sometimes it's the value of the theft. Um, let's say somebody goes in and they steal like three thousand dollars worth of stuff. I think county court would probably be a little bit more fitting to handle a case that big. And that's usually gonna be like a retail theft ring or something like that. Um, the, the ones that are just going in and stuffing a pack of hamburgers down their pants and trying to run out the door, we're gonna, we're gonna.
Yeah, thanks.
You know, but I would like to, you know, I noticed, uh, you guys probably did get into municipal court citations and stuff. Um, and that's towards the end of the presentation. And, um, other tickets, dog tickets and code enforcement violations are more on the up. Our traffic stuff is not on the up. And that's because we're busy. We're busy.
Question about.
Yeah.
When you get a chance.
Um, I just wanted to explain, it's not because the officers aren't doing their jobs. They're, they're busy with a lot of this stuff, uh, mental health calls. We can be taking that kind of out of the equation, letting the, uh, the co-responders handle it. Uh, retail thefts, we're back and forth from Walmart to Safeway to JR's East Main, JR's West Main, um, Big R. So the guys just, they're having a, the guys and gals are just having a hard time finding time to make some traffic stops while they're running around chasing calls. So that's kind of why our traffic stuff is down. Chris and Rich, the code enforcement guys, they're killing it with parking tickets and dog tickets and all that other stuff. So that's why that number looks a little bit higher compared to what my traffic tickets are. Do you have a question?
I had a question. So I'm looking, you know, I, I do crime watch and I check it every day just so I know kind of what's going around around town. Okay, so when I'm looking at these accidents twenty twenty-three, there is very, very few citations issued.
I'm trying to change that trend. That's another issue that we have is that the guys are getting, they're trying to get the accident call cleaned up, cleaning cleaned up, and they're getting called to the next, to the next date. So I would prefer that if you caused a traffic accident, you should be getting a ticket. So I would prefer that if you caused a traffic accident, you should be getting a ticket. And more than likely, it's something small enough that you can get into municipal court. We're not looking at litigation for injuries and a totaled vehicle and stuff. We do, I mean, if you look at unsafe backing, if you, that's one of our highest charges. So people don't know how to back up around town, you know, they're just bumping into everything. That's literally one of the, and it's an easy municipal citation that, you know, I will own that. Not making my officer write that ticket more often, you know? So we could do a better job and I'm gonna try my hardest to make sure that they do do a better job and stuff like that.
Well, the reason I ask, I'm not criticizing. I, what I, I was told in prior years that the prior administration at the police department didn't want to cause any more problems and hate between the offender and the police officer.
So there will be times, so let's just say Franklin backs into you in the parking lot and I'll talk to you both out there and say, hey, this is what's going on. Do you want me to write Franklin a ticket? They'll leave it up to the discretion of the person who got hit and say, no, I don't want to let the insurance hash it out. And we get that a lot too, where, you know, but if it's egregious enough of an accident to where I'm like, you know, he threw it in reverse and peeled out and went across the parking lot and slammed into some cars, I'm gonna go ahead and take that over and say, I'm writing that ticket. Yeah, so I mean, we do leave it up to officer discretion a lot of times and throw it back on the, the people involved, you know? Are you willing to come to court to testify that you, you saw this guy backing into your vehicle and, you know, stuff like that?
Let me tell you, it kind of causes a problem, and I'm speaking as an insurance agent now, not as, not the mayor. But what happens is when people have accidents, I understand if it's in a private parking lot, it's not really much you can do.
Right.
But people assume that just because they don't have a ticket, they weren't at fault for the accident.
Right, and then they bring their insurance accident and it says they were at fault vehicles.
Yes.
According to our police report, yes.
Right, right, so I.
And then you gotta argue with them.
Exactly, and I have to explain to them the civil versus the criminal.
Yeah.
But I, I for one, and this is just my opinion, I know I'll probably get the first one that gets a ticket because I'm talking. But I think there's a punitive side of giving tickets.
Yeah.
Like, you know, you understand.
There is.
And I'm not, like I was saying, I'm not being critical.
And a lot of times, like I said, Ms. Mayor, is that we'll get there and the person who was hit is like, oh, no, no, I don't want to get them in trouble, you know? And, you know, if they aren't willing to cooperate with it and not, not go through with it and they don't want them in trouble, you know, a lot of my officers are, we're human beings too, and we feel bad for things that happen out in the world. We'll say, okay, you know, but he's still at fault for the accident in Walmart, so, so. But we could do quite far, a lot better job.
Just to give you some information too, so you can pass it along. Insurance companies will not file a claim. Like if I hit Manny, Manny called my insurance company and.
Everybody smashing into each other, just having a great time.
Manny called my insurance company, my insurance company will not act on that until they hear from.
And could I interject too, please? From a legal standpoint, if an officer that's responding to an accident, if they can determine fault, it's really helpful to write the ticket. Because like if I'm involved in a offender matter with somebody, if no one gets a ticket, I may have to have my insurance pay for my damages. Whereas if it's determined the other car was at fault, then their insurance will have to pay for both of those. And also civil litigation, we have lawyers frequently coming to municipal court, watching what's going on. When there is a ticket written, they want to make sure that something sticks so that for future, you know, litigation purposes, they can say that either the person plodder was found guilty of some kind of, you know, fault for the ticket or for the accident, so that they can recover further if they have any kind of bodily injuries. So it's very helpful. I know a lot of times you can't even determine who's at fault. And that can be difficult, and it's helpful to consider.
We just had an instance, instance recently where a guy crashed into some vehicles and had them transported out. We can't find him though. We don't know where he lives, we don't know how to get ahold of him, and he was the guy that smashed into some parked cars. So we're having a hard time tracking him down. So that, that kind of plays into it sometimes too, where they get shipped by ambulance to the hospital, the hospital puts them on a helicopter and they get flown away and then we never see them again, you know? So it's, it's, it's a, it's a hard balance, you know? I want us to do better for the, for, for the sake of the people involved in it and municipal court, obviously. There's just a lot of factors that go into it.
Sure, understood.
And in my fifteen years, I've been a police officer here, every year it's, hey, guys, gotta write my tickets. Hey, guys, gotta write my tickets. Well, now I guess we've started it is for me to go tell people that.
That's why you get paid big bucks.
Yes, I guess, yeah.
No, I have a, is anything, I have some questions.
Go ahead.
Is Keep Trinidad Safe helping you in all of this, some of these addiction?
They are. I, I, I think it's just us getting these people pointed in the right direction and then their willingness to do it. They're, they're adults. You, you know, it's not illegal to be addicted to drugs, unfortunately. I wish there was more stipulation to say, hey, you've got to get into a treatment program if you get busted. But, you know, we don't have that. Because I want them to get help too. I don't want to have the recidivism with these people, the same people over and over and over and over again, you know? But if we get them pointed in the right direction and they get into contact with the right people, hopefully they are getting them the help they need with like Keep Trinidad Safe and. Crossroads does what they can, but I hate to say it, Crossroads is a population based funding place. So the more people we put in, there's more money to give. And I don't know what they're, I don't, I don't know that they are pushing the people in the right direction, I guess, when they get a person into their facility.
I didn't realize you could sign yourself out.
Yeah, it's, yeah, yeah. That's a whole other conversation.
Okay. I have another question. So I think it was prior to Mr. Ruber here being here, but I don't, maybe somebody could remember. We were talking at one point, and maybe Steve and I talked about it also, about getting code enforcement away from the PD and someplace else. Would that help you at all?
I think at the point in time that this conversation started happening is because we couldn't get very good code enforcement officers in there. They weren't doing the right things.
That's changed.
That's changed. Chris Smith and Rich, and all this are, they, they come in, they put their solid hours in, they end up doing their paperwork, they're doing their reports. I mean, Chris, I mean, fills up the shelter on a daily basis, or a weekly basis. And we can't help him, calm down, man. Slow down, slow down, you know? But he, he's eager, he loves to do his job, you know? So right now, they're kind of self-sufficient with doing some things, not chasing after them, telling them, hey, I seen this weed lot over here, what are you guys doing with it? It's been there all summer, you guys haven't done nothing with it. They're getting things taken care of. You know, it may not seem like it, but to look at it from my end, I didn't know how busy they are and see the paperwork that they're actually filing and they're getting stuff done, so.
I just thought it might make the PD more efficient.
I'm not eager to get rid of them right now, but if it means us getting more police officers maybe in the streets, that might be a conversation that we have.
And Mayor Council, so we did look into that a little bit after I first got here. Some other cities have moved like code enforcement to their development staff. But I think to, to interim chief's point, we have the staff here who's doing a very good job. But what we've done in lieu of making that change is our code actually allows us to issue administrative citations, so they're not criminal. So they're civil citations and we're finding terrific success on that. We just started at the end of December. And so we've had some of our Connex issues that have been plaguing us for a couple of years. Those are starting to get taken care of. We, just last week, we had a RV that was sitting, I think in someone's front yard, being used as a home. And that process now has precipitated that being removed. So if we're, we're finding that for a lot of people, money is really the more motivating factor than a criminal citation. And there's really not an appeal process or anything like that. It's not a criminal thing. It's, it's something where if you don't take care of the issue, the citations continue to escalate in value and what it's going to cost you. So there's a strong motivation to correct the issue. We're gonna keep doing that side of the coin as well.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
I have.
Oh, I'm sorry.
My turn.
It's your turn.
You sure? You're jumping out of line. Mike, I don't, I know you guys really do a good job, and I know how tough it is to be a cop. There's no question about it. But what, what I'd like to see is, and I don't know how we do this, but we've got to do something with these people riding bicycles. And now it's getting worse and worse. And they think that they can just go wherever they want and they shouldn't obey the traffic rules. Like they shouldn't be riding on the sidewalk and stuff like that.
The young man that rides wheelies through town.
Yeah, and it's just.
He's been cited several times and actually arrested after resisting us trying to stop him. I don't know what process is going through court right now, because that went to county court.
Yeah, and you got kids skateboarding. I mean, this is just petty stuff, but you got kids skating. And another real issue, and I don't know what you could ever do about this, but all these people homeless and even not homeless people, they walk at night and they wear black and you can't see them. And sooner or later, somebody's gonna get really hit.
I've been in the same boat.
I mean, it's just, and then they, you know, most of the people driving, and I'm one of them, you had a big truck and you can't see the way the hoods are, you know, when they come off the curb. And I'm really kind of concerned about the safety issue.
Some communities have actually got together and bought high visible safety.
That's what I was thinking that.
For, for people who had them out at the, you know, their gathering spots and stuff. Chaminade Park, when they're doing lunch and breakfast, maybe we can figure out a way to get them some high, high visibility gear and say, hey, put that yellow beanie on when you're walking across the street or something, or the yellow jacket or something. Yeah, and they don't have to wear it the whole day. It's just when you know you're gonna walk across the street, maybe pop it on just so you have a little bit more visibility. Because I will agree with you, I've had close calls, right? Especially in this area.
Yeah, it was terrible for them, yeah.
Yeah, and they, they just walk right out and fortunately they're in the crosswalk, so they're at the mercy of, they have the right of way when they're in the crosswalk, so. And if they're all in black, it is very hard to see the lighting score right in here, so.
Yeah, and the, and the other thing is, and I know it's tough, is I'd like to see one of your officers once in a while drive through Main Street and Commercial. I know they, but these people just burn U-turns, I mean, right in front of you and on the wrong side of the road. And I mean, it's just ridiculous. I mean, they just pull out, they don't even care. And we need to really kind of give somebody a few tickets to maybe show somebody that we're at least stopping them and tell them we can't do that. And I understand you're busy.
And that goes along with the same conversation that.
Yeah, exactly the same.
I would love for us to be able to have people out there just writing tickets all day long and stuff, but unfortunately, we're still responding to this.
I understand, so.
It would be considered definitely.
But I'd like you to see it and the bicycle, I think that's a good, I think we should work on it. If maybe the city, we have some extra, get some vests or something.
Can we have a bike reflective cape?
Yeah, and lights on the bikes. And I did notice one of your guys stopped the other night because they didn't have any light. You can't see them, you're holding up on them and stuff. Yeah, and I appreciate you, you're doing a good job, I think. And I understand that, you know, it's a tough, there's no easy way being a cop, so appreciate what you're doing.
Were he a police officer?
Yeah, for quite a while.
Okay, I doubt so. Mr. DeBono, I'm sorry.
No, no, don't be sorry yet. Same thing as what Frank had mentioned, that, you know, we spend fifty thousand dollars in bike lanes and I see kids outside of the bike lanes and they're going through stop signs on Nevada and Colorado. And, you know, that can definitely, I mean, they're taking their life in their own hands, but they can cause another accident with a vehicle.
Yeah.
So, I mean, yeah, it's, it's quite a problem now that the weather's getting warmer. Not as many bikers as when I grew up, because there was no phones or anything else.
Right.
You know, so, but yeah, same thing as what Frank had stated. I think it's pretty, pretty important that kids, you know, that here, we used to have to take a bike test. We'd have to take a test when we got our bike license.
Exactly.
You know, and I know they don't do that anymore. Yeah, yeah.
Bikes have license plates on them.
Yeah. We had to register and everything.
Yeah, I remember the train.
When you was this?
In the sixties.
In the sixties. They offered.
During the King Manfest.
That hit me eighties.
Yeah. King Manfest.
It was a voluntary thing when I was a kid. You could bring your bike down to the bike rodeo, is what they called it. And take your registration down and they put you through a little course and they gave you a certificate and said, good job, kid.
We appreciate everything you're doing. I'm glad to hear that the crime is going down in Trinidad. So does that make your job where you don't have a lot of injuries or is it safety? Safety, do you have all the police that you need in the community or?
Well, we're never gonna have enough police officers to come back.
How many would you, would you like to have? How many more would you like to have?
You know, with the size of our city, you know, we could probably use about another five officers to just start getting back and being able to operate and be a little bit more proactive. We're a lot of reactive right now, to be honest with you.
Kind of short five, is that what you're saying?
I would have to say about five officers. And, you know, I could sit and say, no, I want twenty more police officers. And we know that that's probably never gonna happen. But our community's growing.
You guys know it's growing.
I know it's growing, you can tell it's growing. And we have to keep up with city services and police department's one of them. So I would love to see more police officers on the streets here. And that's gonna help go out and be proactive and make the traffic stops and let the kid, hey, get on, get off through the sidewalk with your skateboard, dude, that's a sign right there. Since you're not supposed to be on the sidewalk, you know what I mean? So it will help out a lot to have more officers, you know? I would love to be able to put a police officer out every single corner of town to just monitor and keep an eye on things, but it's not the, it's not gonna happen, so. Because we're over here doing something and somebody's doing something over here.
Bottom of ten.
Yeah, so help a little bit, yeah.
Yeah, just one. You know, when, of course, that was different when I was a cop, but we used to, in the late afternoon, I mean, early, well, say around noon to about six o'clock, seven o'clock, we used to have a performance, walk in the streets. Have you ever put any idea on doing something like that?
We've tried it, but again, we don't have enough police officers, because then they have to get called to the other side of town, because maybe you're covering from, let's see, it would be Commercial Street blocks it that way and are not over river, so maybe you're walking over here and helping your beat partner, but then we get called to the extreme north side of town for an emergency, so. Extra boots on the ground would help us get people out in, in the faces of our community and our businesses and shaking hands and saying hi, hey, everything okay? Cool, have a good day. I would love to see it. I would, I think that goes a long way. I was out Friday doing some things for the police department. It's, it's a different experience going into somebody's place and saying, hey, how are you? Shaking hands and looking them in the eye and talking to them. And I felt welcomed by these places that I went and had conversations with, because they were like, oh, gee, we're not used to the police just coming in and chatting, because it wasn't just about the business I was there for. It was how are things? You know, so I, I think it goes a long way.
Manny's got.
Yeah.
To piggyback off of both of these here. So, so there's no standard on how many, how many police officers we need to have per population? Like per one hundred, per one thousand? Is there something that's stating?
I'm assuming SIRS would have some type of guideline that says per X amount of people you should have. Our recommendation should be this many police officers, this many firefighters.
Well, this way it kind of helps us to kind of figure out, you know, especially when it comes down to funding and stuff, if we are lacking in that, if that's a possibility, if that's out there, maybe we can go off of that and kind of help you out and get our community what they actually need. One of the other things that I had a question on was the off-road vehicles on the street. I mean, it is literally just been, it's been crazy. And I know on my block, it's just, and that's the noise I can hear.
You're pretty close, you're pretty close.
Yeah, so it's like we'll hear those go through, you know, our alleys. And I do have a lot of unhoused going up our alleys and stuff like that. But then all of a sudden you hear that ATV come and fly and I'm like, someone's really, really gonna get hurt.
And unfortunately, we did have an accident recently where somebody got severely injured on a dirt bike that was on the city streets. This young man had been attempted to be contacted by police officers numerous times and had fled from us. And we're not gonna endanger the community, that, that person or our police officers by engaging in pursuit with them. But the, the driver of the motorbike decided to make those decisions to run and then found himself in a reckless driving situation on the wrong end of another vehicle. So I'm hoping that the party's okay. I haven't heard anything, an update on him, but it was a pretty violent crash, unfortunately. And I don't want to see that either. The problem is, is when they see the red and blue lights, they're like, they're gone. And that doesn't do us any good, because now they're fleeing. It's taking undue regard for their own safety and the safety of the public. So I don't know.
It's really.
It's a tough situation, but these kids have a lot of open space around town, outside of the city limits that they can go messing around in. We usually tell them that when we are able to have those conversations. Those aren't made to be on the streets. They're not. The tires aren't in the right condition to be on the streets. It's made for dirt. The brakes aren't made for you to stop on streets, it's made for dirt. A lot of them aren't registering and insuring them properly. So there's a lot of issues with that, but if I can get them stopped, I would love to take care of business, but they don't stop for us.
Yeah, because a lot of ones on my, on my area's side of town that I've seen, they're maybe only four foot tall, so.
Unfortunately, they're younger and younger and younger. Their parents are letting, turning them loose on these things. And what I encourage people to do is give us a call if you, if you know that you have a neighbor where they're coming from and maybe we can get over there and have a conversation with them, talk to them a little bit. Because we do have those ordinances in place. Oh, yeah, and there's, there's state laws and there's, there's city ordinances. These, those are not allowed on the streets.
Gary?
I have, I have five questions.
I have, I have five questions.
I know, I saw you writing.
So, uh, thank you so much for coming today, um, obviously, I, as with the rest of the council and staff, we really do appreciate what the police. Uh, do, it's a, I'm sure it's a tough job, um, and I think it's, it's so easy for these sessions to turn into like, well, do more, do more, do more. With less, and so these questions is not what I'm intending by, I'd like to have a discussion if, um, I can. I was looking through the officer's statistics.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that's interesting to read and I wanna be very careful here, um. Obviously, you know, each officer is a unique individual and person, but it does seem some are quite a lot more lengthy than others. What, what can, what's contributing to the difference of statistics, say, and without naming names at all?
So, if you have a sergeant to tackle in the crew, he's more on the lines of management of the crew and administrative duties, he's not gonna be. He should be out, he ain't got nothing to do, stopping cars and, and doing that type of, so proactive work. But the sector officers, the patrolmen are usually the ones out, um, getting called to the calls and taking the reports and stuff, so. You may see some officers that just seem like, jeez, how is this person surviving with all the work he's been put on his shoulders all year long? But then you got this guy who hasn't done really anything, so sometimes you get those type of situations where a sergeant is really. Trying to manage the schedule, manage his team, manage their training, stuff like that, reading their reports. Um, the sergeants, all that funnels through them and then funnels it to me after the sergeant gets done with it and sends it to me, so that could be part of the case. Um, so.
Um, another question I had, this, this may be illegal in some fashion.
Oh, boy. Listen, listen.
I don't know, turn, turn off, turn off the.
I know.
If, if a, a police department was to say, set out with some intention of, of, um. Making a self-funding position, i.e., uh, the person is intended to patrol downtown specifically. And if you have X number of citations a day, you'll pay for that position.
Highly illegal.
Yeah.
Okay, that's called a quota or something, you know, that stuff. Yeah, we can't do that, um, we can offer other incentives.
A lot of incentives.
And I, and I've learned this in some trainings and some other leadership that they have, that they encourage their officers to go out and do more work. Say, hey, you guys have your own little friendly competition amongst each other, whoever wins, I'll work your shit for you.
Yeah.
I'll come out and work your shit for you, or I'll buy you dinner, or something like that, I don't know, personally buy you dinner, not PD buy you dinner. So, just a little friendly competition.
That's incentivization, not a quota.
Yeah, kind of, sorry, I guess, but you know, um, I've, I've kicked those ideas around and, you know, it's just some stuff that I haven't got able to try to implement and push out there yet, you know, so. But, you know, we, we can do little fun things like that, but when it comes to your pay or an extra bonus check or anything like that, we're not doing that.
Right, well, yeah, I wasn't meaning to get their pay retired too, but I.
I do.
Yeah. Um, so how, how is the homeless coalition going? Can you speak a little on that, at least from your perspective?
I've had a lead man kind of run with that, Detective Sergeant Lee, um, it's a lot of work and she's been, she's been working on it pretty good, so. We've been in the loop about it and talking about it, but it really hasn't been a topic of, of our discussions daily. Um, I can kinda help you out a little bit, so last year, um, some of the primary goals that they established last summer was to. Have formally established shelters, um, for wintertime and then, uh, they've also put together some. Uh, ideas on how our various support entities can better coordinate with each other and I think there's been a lot of positive progress on that front. One of the things that, um, I think is really important for people to keep in mind, the city kinda put this idea together, but we don't necessarily want to be. The overseers of this group long-term, um, so, um, Mike Shreik, Jenley has done a phenomenal job representing the city and being part of that. Ultimately, I think their mission is to figure out how we can get to an encampment at some point to provide better services to our unhoused residents, but.
Yeah, I think, I think anything we can do to. Help, uh, make a different area other than Chaminade Park being where, where they're fed multiple times a day and they end up congregating there. I think that'd be beneficial to a lot of the stuff you're saying, crossing the street, um, it would allow residents to use the park for what it's used for. Because a lot of residents don't currently use the park for that reason. And it may actually help you too, then, um.
Can I interject on that? So, I remember when I talked to, to, when Chief Glorioso was, cause I, uh, Councilwoman, um, Okaakri and I. Uh, attended some of those meetings and Chief Glorioso designated a spot over there off of Pine Street, but they're not using him for to feed people.
He did, he definitely did designate an area, um, by, 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 in the parking lots. They refused to go over there because of the noise from the traffic, the pollution from the traffic. They brought us a million and one reasons why they didn't wanna go over there and couldn't hold them to it.
And what?
We couldn't hold them to saying, you have to be over there, you know, it's a public park that they were doing their, their stuff.
Because that area, I.
Right, and it's an unused parking lot, there's a whole lot of.
Do you know where that little hotel is off, it used to be a hotel off of Pine Street where it intersects with Arizona Avenue?
And then the train station's right on the other side.
There's a road to go in, they actually have the cordon off and there's, uh, tables under there.
Yeah, and they, they didn't wanna stay.
It is.
I think it worked for maybe a month or two, if that, and they decided that they didn't wanna be over there and they went back to the park. I can't, can't be messing about, people wanting to be in the park. They're making masses and they're damaging things, that's a different story. Um, we've had that discussion with the folks at our feet, they'll, they'll breakfast burrito and they'll just roll the wrapper up and toss it on the ground. Um, they've asked the police to have that for us.
It's actually unsafe because a lot of the unhoused here have animals.
Yeah.
And the animals are not loosed and it's almost, it's almost, it is unsafe to walk in that park, even in the day.
It really is.
It is.
And that sort of relates to my, the last thing I wanted to ask you, if there's anything that can be done, um, so. I know someone very well, um, that reported this to me, I did not witness it myself, um, but I believe the person could be accurate in the description. Apparently, I believe it was a Safeway worker that was bit by one of the.
Um, transient.
Turned into a mess, I don't know if the police are involved in it or not.
We are.
But, uh, um, you know, I, I have spoken to a lot of constituents, especially, um, to elderly people. Um, that just don't feel safe to go to Safeway past, uh, you know, dusk and that's.
I feel the same way sometimes.
Yeah, I mean, uh, you know, I go down there for my family, but yeah, you, you go in, in and it's not a, a great environment, is there? Is there anything?
We do patrol in there, we do tell them, hey, it's time to move on, Safeway does call us, say, hey, they're hanging out in the front of the building again. We go through, we'll tell them to leave, they'll go around the block and they come right back. Like maybe, I, I don't know if you know or not, but I have noticed over the last couple of weeks, there's been private security at Safeway, I don't know, anyone else has seen that? Is that? I, I haven't had a chance to talk to them, I have seen the private security guard running around the, the building and inside the building and stuff. And I don't know if that's helping their, their situation with the, um, loitering, I guess you would call it, on, on their property. Um, but like I said, we do, we'll patrol in there or they'll call us and we'll ask them to leave, kind of move on. And they'll just circle the block and go down and they'll end up back over there. Um, I actually had to tell a young lady the other day while I was off duty, she came walking up to me with her hands like this and she told me, sir, I said, man, I don't have any money, I'm sorry. And I said, I'm, I'm a police officer, by the way, and she was turning, walked away really quick.
Yeah.
You know.
I'm sorry, no.
Um, so, oh, I, I was just gonna say, sorry. Um, anyway, Acting Chief Estanovic, I do appreciate you being here today, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tough job, I, I wouldn't be.
I'm trying to make it work with what I got and.
Right, and thank you for everything you do.
Thanks.
Mike, when the contracted Walmart security had issues, did they radio to you?
They call dispatch, yeah, they just call it, they just call the dispatch line, it's not nine one one, it's the four 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 one, it goes right into the dispatcher, the administrative line. They tell us, hey, we've got an issue going on up here and that's.
That's the number I always call.
Yes, it's the best way to get into dispatch, four 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 one, unless you have an accident, emergency call number one, please. So, but yeah, they do call us, they don't deal with their own situations. I don't, I, I don't know if they're just an extra set of eyes or what their contract is with Walmart or what, I think, I don't know, they, they haven't really told us. But they do call us, yes. And there comes, I do wanna brag on our police department a little bit, um, a couple of things Mike didn't mention, we had, um, an incident last year, um. I think it was a domestic violence issue where our cops were actually shot at and fortunately, everybody made it out alive, um, so that. That was, uh, you know, very good to see and then I can't underscore or address, that's, well, I just wanna give them a lot of credit for. The work they've been doing with the CDI on, on fentanyl particularly, the amount of drugs that are going through our community probably right now. On a minute-by-minute basis is staggering, it's a, a very tough thing to, uh, to do, but, uh, Mike's right, the, the volume of, of drug seize this year alone. Is huge and what that means is instead of going to Denver and then being, being distributed back down to area, that's all the less, uh, drugs in the system, so. I really appreciate their partnership with the state as well.
Absolutely, didn't you say that one seizure was enough fentanyl to kill?
Could've killed the whole town, probably.
Yeah.
You know, you told me I twenty-five, correct? Yeah, that was one of, of I twenty-five, that was in conjunction with the DEA. Um, which they just, they got their intel, they called my guys, said, hey, something's coming through and they found them, so. Um, and those are some of the ones that I can't give a lot of details on, cause I don't have it, they haven't turned out there yet, they, it, these investigations start with a stop. An interview leads to another interview, leads to the next guy and next thing you know, you have a whole network of drug dealers. The, the, these are parts of those things you see on the news where they say seventy-five people indicted on drug charges and then you start reading the names and you're like, oh, cow. You know, you can't pronounce them because most of them are cartel-related, uh, Mexican nationals or other countries that. Are, are influencing this situation, so, um, it's just astounding that it's coming here, you know, in Trinidad, you know, I mean, we have an artery and that's what it is. And like Mr. Ruder said, for everyone we catch, twenty not lie. And the money going back the direction, other direction, same thing, and we're talking millions of dollars, so it's, we're working, it's, it's tough, we're trying to get it wrapped up.
You know, if I could please, I was in county court this morning, the judge, Michelle, was raving about Officer Harkin, Hugh Harkin. And his work with his dog and he testified recently as an expert and, and the judge upheld everything and. And, uh, because it was a, it was a drug sniff, drug bust, not sure why it was in county court, but it's quite fascinating. Because when the dog is, um, sensing that there are drugs present and it's a, it's a hit. The officer can never say like, good boy, or reward the dog on the spot. Because that makes the dog more inclined to in the future possibly have false hits. And so there are very subtle signs that they don't wanna, you know, in any way encourage or discourage. Anyway, the, the judge was raving about Officer Harkin and his testimony and.
Well, good.
His expertise on the dog.
The dogs don't have quotas either.
Sergeant Harkin's actually been asked by the, the team he trains with to, um, help with the, their state K nine academy. So, I give, I've given him the blessing to go up there and train other officers, that's how much I, how much I trust him. And he's been, he's, he's very good at what he does, so.
Captain, one last thing I need to ask you about little gift certificates, um, this quick, um, on the NIBRS, I don't know if you said that. Um, crime counts, first of all, it's great because almost all of them are going down from twenty-two to twenty-three. Uh, the DUI in twenty-two, there were forty-six, in twenty, in twenty-three, there were twenty-six, that should be a reduction, but it reflects a growth in that. A significant amount of growth, so I just thought that may be a typo, that on DUI, see, it's a forty-three point, forty-eight percent increase.
Oh, it could be, yeah, it, it could be.
Cause it's almost half of them, so I'm guessing that, that's, that should be negative.
Yeah.
But what, not fully because I'm, I'm nerd about those things.
Well, no, I mean, and if we're putting stats out there, I don't want them to be skewed either, you know, and I, I don't know what the system is that she uses to. Um, process all this information, but it comes from our records management system, um, and it does a lot of the graphing and charting for us, so.
But the, the reason I brought it up is because there are all these articles that are published online about, you know, Trinidad or some other city being dangerous. And I think it's really important that we know all this and we can respond and say, no.
Yeah.
We are not a violent city, we have some, some issues and, you know, the police are on it and also our crime stats are going down significantly.
Yeah, but I, I, I forgot about this page, that would've helped me in the beginning to, uh, to talk about things going on downwards, and I like graphs, sorry, I, I'm not a numbers person, I'm, I'm a picture person. Um, but yeah, if you look at that, they are, a lot of them are, are, are on the downward trend, um.
It's, um, it's.
I've seen it, I just can't find it.
Uh, it is page twelve, I think, is what it shows up on in my twelve of a hundred and seven.
Oh. And, and this one really just has, you know, aggravated assaults, non-consensual sex offenses, DUI, robbery, larceny, burglary, fraud,挪ry, theft, I mean, it doesn't even have. The homicides and normal assaults and stuff, but I mean, those are really good numbers to have trending downward, so. Um, yeah, I, I. And I think a lot of it is too, is we've had some really good police officers and some really good success rates of getting the criminals that we've had in our community put away in prison. Um, that we're getting off the streets, so the, those, those hardened criminals aren't here to commit those crimes, you know, we're, we're a little bit safer, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Very much. Don't, hey, don't you wanna plug the you-know-what that you're having in a week or two?
Oh, so, um, yeah, that, we're, we're, uh, we're partnering with a, an organization called Shield six one six, I don't know if anybody's ever heard of them, they've been on News Five a lot. And they, um, reached out to me and said, hey, we have a potential donor that wants to contribute to your officers getting rifle-rated ballistic vests. To outfit everybody, we have a couple of them, we don't have enough for everybody, and I said, sure, you know, what, what do we gotta do? So, he kinda explained to me that I need to go out in the community and kinda get with, uh, community business leaders and stuff that are wanting to donate to the cause, um, we're gonna. Organizing, organizing was for luncheon on the nineteenth, but we were looking at Nana and Nano's and unfortunately, Fran doesn't do a lot of catering anymore. So, I'm trying to get us a, a caterer.
So, wait, the current vest or not rifle rating?
The soft armor that we provide our officers when you first get hired doesn't have rifle rating, it's for handgun, small, small arms, handgun rifle rating. If you want one on your own, you can go buy it.
How?
And he's like, what?
Well, yeah, how much, uh, more.
You can't have more.
To motion.
It's a plate, it's like, it's, it's a composite plate, they're making them thinner and thinner and lighter and lighter these days.
And how much are they?
Um, anywhere you can get a bit, depends on the manufacturing, what do you want, five hundred to two thousand dollars. So, twenty-seven officers, that's quite a bit of money.
Yeah.
So, um, the tactical team guys have them because we were able to get, I think, a marijuana funk to help us get some of that equipment for our, for our guys a few years back. But unfortunately, there's just not enough money to go around and get everybody's stuff, so when these, uh, organizations come in and they wanna help us get donations, um, we really appreciate it, so.
I started to put that on the radio last week.
Good.
Is it still on the nineteenth?
It is, unless I don't find if somebody do much and I gotta go find people, but hold on, but I'm thinking, you know, like I, like I explained to the, to the folks I did get with on, on Friday. Uh, most of this is being funneled through Shield six one six, if somebody wants to donate to the police department, they can, but we'll funnel it back into Shield six one six so it's properly managed. Yeah, we, you know, we're, you know, we, we're not gonna tell you, donate, uh, donate to us, but we prefer to go to the organization first, that way the proper channels are going through and somebody says, well, I gave them a thousand bucks, where did it go? We probably got a bookkeeping team and all that good stuff in there, so we'll see where it goes, I, I'm hoping we still get to pull it off on the nineteenth. It's, it's a lunch and learn, he's, the, the founder's gonna come down and him and I are gonna explain what we're doing and the cause for it. And then, um, I think he said late spring or early summer, he was hoping to be able to have the funding available to come down and present us with ballistic-grade, uh, armor. For every sworn police officer at the Trinidad Police Department, so.
Well, let's hope.
Yeah.
All right, if we can help.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
I have nothing, well, I have an idea, but Mr. Ruder, Mr. Bounser?
No, 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 they're playing.
Well, this is an idea that I've had and it's just an idea. I'm prefacing my remarks.
I mean, illegal.
It's not illegal.
Only your idea.
So, you know, some discussions that we have here at council, we're trying to visualize areas in town. Like when we were discussing the pickleball courts, when we're discussing something like code enforcement. I don't know if everybody understands where these locations are at or what they look like. So my idea is maybe have a, a work session, well, it couldn't be a work session.
Field trip.
Field trip. And use the van from the tourism, uh, the tourism minivan and take us around to show us where the, the pickleball courts are gonna be. Uh, there's a few areas in town that are, I say problematic, that I, I, so is that legal? Can we?
Yeah, well, yeah, go ahead, that's, I was gonna suggest, um, best effort for me to do it in batches of you all. Instead of the whole group, um, just so we don't have a quorum. Republic deserves to be there if you all are all meeting and discussing together, it's really hard to coordinate that.
What about the, just to jump to on that, what about the Google Earth street, maybe we could have that on?
Right, can do that as well.
Right.
Well, I, I would like to do that because, you know, I'm trying to, it started off with the pickleball courts and we had discussions about where they should or should not be. And I think if we looked at them together, we could maybe come to a consensus. And then I know cops is always the major factor. There's a few areas in town that I'd like to discuss as well.
Steve's absolutely right, we need to be, you know, careful of, of meaning requirements and posting. I'll just say, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to be overly solicitous, but years ago, council took a field, I forget what the reason was.
Did the Lanceford thing?
Was it Lanceford, they took a field trip, they went out to the, like the, the shop. They went all over, I, and I don't remember what the reason was, but it was a great thing. I mean, it was a really good thing, so I'm just gonna throw that out there. And I think council appreciated being able to do this, we have not discussed this, I want you to know. But it was a, it was a really helpful thing, whatever the purpose was for council taking that field trip. But we, we, we did that and I think it was very beneficial at the time.
Well, you know, that brings up another point, Les, because very few staff people see us and can interact with us personally. You know, I think maybe it would behoove us to go to the shop, to go to the street bridge, to go to the water department and look at the facilities and talk to the people that we work, that we work together with. You know, I don't, I don't know how legally, I mean, you know, God knows that, you know, probably be on Facebook that we're doing something suspicious tonight, but I think it's important that we make that connection with the people we work with.
I think that's a, you know, it's not up to me, that's kind of a policy.
No, it's a great suggestion. We'll, we'll get some dots together.
Does, does council have any ideas about that, do you have any objections to that?
No, I, I always, before we do anything, I always try to at least Google Earth something or Google Earth out by it, so I know.
Well, we can't Google Earth, not unless we do FaceTime on the shops and like the land, you know, the two, two or three gentlemen that work out there.
No, but it's, it's better by far to actually go to that place. But I, because I'm very visual, I need to see it.
I think we, and they need to know that we support them.
Yeah.
Just a thought, anybody have any objections?
We just take Tom with us, right? We do it during the work session, we just take Tom with us.
Don't put a camera on his head.
Okay.
The cool community engagement though, honestly, it would be.
What's uh, what's the deal at the skate park, that looks terrible.
Oh, yeah, there council, we actually just, you've probably seen it exploding on, on Facebook as well, but we are in the process of bidding out the work um to have it rehabilitated. So we um, you all authorized some money last year, um, and we're gonna be uh, do your refresh of the entire surface and hopefully making it a.
They're thinking that, that the paint that's on there now is what we paid for to.
And that's not the case at all, we haven't even begun the work yet, we haven't even awarded the contractors. But we're hoping to have it done by, um, or later this spring and have it brought by a professional company.
That is the general consensus, that that was the work.
That's not the case at all. No, we had some residents who went out and took it upon themselves to cover up some of the graffiti, so I think that's what you're seeing. But that is not the professional job, in fact, we'll be coating it with an epoxy, um, that's hopefully going to deter graffiti. We're even considering putting in a graffiti wall, so we have a designated space where people do wanna go do artistic tagging with it. I don't know if they can do that there, but uh, no, we have plans for the skate park to make it, hopefully bring it back up to its original form.
How old is that skate?
It's twenty-year anniversary last year.
Can you say something for the order, that this isn't something that we had?
It's not on the order.
Don't want us to be in some concern.
We're just talking.
Yeah, no discussion or decisions, but that's the update on the skate park.
Okay.
You're right.
Anything else? Okay, guys, our next meeting is Tuesday, nineteen?
Tuesday, Sunday.